Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance and our invocation from our city manager.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bar heads please. Heavenly Father, we seek your help with our business affairs today. We thank for all your blessings and for the successful outcomes of our city events and for all our employees. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We have a proclamation on our National Night Out. Chief Dominguez?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the 21st Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Mission to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country promoting cooperative police committee crime prevention efforts, and whereas the city of Mission plays a vital role in assisting the Mission Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Mission and in supporting National Night Out 2016 locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of Mission be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Mission, and whereas police committee partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of National Night Out program, now therefore we the City Council of the city of Mission do hereby proclaim August 2nd, 2016, to be dedicated as National Night Out and call upon all our citizens in the community to join the Mission Police Department in the 21st Annual National Night Out Fight Against Crime to be held at the Lio Peña Placita Park on August 2nd, 2016, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Proclaim on this the 25th day of July, 2016.
Okay. We do need a motion to proclaim.
A motion and second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, City Council, I just wanted to make a formal invitation to you and the members of our community, and again, this is the 21st Annual National Night Out at La Lio Peña Placita Park, and again, this is Tuesday, August 2nd, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Everybody's invited.
Thank you very much.
It's a great event, a community event.
Chief, your proclamation and we can take a quick picture with your office.
Can I have a question?
One more? Want to start this?
Do you want someone else on the other side? Get somebody else right here. Over here. Just bounce out of the way. Okay, everybody look over here, Mitch. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one.
Thank you, Tony.
Don't forget to be there.
I'll be there.
Around the corner.
It's my job, Michael. It's my job, Michael.
Remember when I fell?
We have a report from our greater chamber of commerce.
That was funny.
Mrs. Tucker?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We welcomed new chamber member Contempo Fitness Studio with ribbon cutting on Thursday, July 14th, at 2301 East Griffin Parkway, Suite A. We had a great turnout as the business owners and team shared samples of their products and staff showcased their products. Coming up this Wednesday, July 27th, we will have a groundbreaking ceremony for Texas National Bank, which will be located at 501 South Cherry Road. All are welcome to join us for the ceremony at 10:30 AM. And of course, this Saturday is our big summer event, our chef's barbecue throwdown and car show. Through this event, we will provide scholarships for each high school from MCISD and Cherryland ISD. This free event is a unique version of a classic event. We're grabbing some of the best chefs and cooks from great restaurants across the valley, from Brownsville all the way to Mission, bringing them here and telling them to get behind a pit and produce the best barbecue for $2,500 in cash prizes. We are selling $10 wristbands to taste samples from each cooking team and we encourage attendees to order those before the event by contacting the chamber. We look forward to seeing everyone out there and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is, we have your department reports that are in your packet. If you have any questions, I'll have a sitate ask now.
I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
Motion and second to go ahead and approve the reports that are in your packet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that might, who would want to address the council? Nobody wants to talk to us anymore, so. Anyway, we'll go ahead and move on to our public hearings and we'll ask Mr. Teguinda to give us information on 1.1A.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing. This is for rezoning of a 2.93 acre tract of land out of Lot 271, John H. Sherry subdivision from agricultural open interim to R1A, which is large lot, single family. The applicant is Michael Broughton and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve it. On July 11th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located along the northeast corner of Stewart Road and East 28th Street. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the R1A zoning. What's proposed here, Mayor and Council, are nine, uh, single-family large lots, so this is the first part, which is rezoning. Staff is recommending approval as is the planning commission and our city manager. This is a public hearing and this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we'll go ahead and accept the recommendation from our planning and zoning and our staff.
Move to approve.
And adopt ordinance 4374. We do have a motion and a second, I think.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
To adopt ordinance 4374. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yes, motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1B is a public hearing also. This is for rezoning of a 0.25 acre tract of land being a part or a portion of the golf course at Lake Reserve out of Meadow Creek Country Club, Phase 1A. It's currently zoned agricultural open interim and the proposal is to rezone it to R1T Townhouse Residential, and the applicants are Abdiel and Ismina Garcia. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve it. On July 11th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located near the northeast corner of River Ben and Oasis Drive. There was no public opposition during the meeting, the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the R1T zone. Staff recommends approval as does our city manager. This matters, this is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we ask to go ahead and accept the recommendation and also adopt ordinance 4375.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and second to approve and adopt ordinance 4375. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1C is a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for Buddy's Drive-Thru located at 501 North Inspiration Road. This is Lot 61 of Georgiana Estates subdivision. It's currently zoned C3 and the applicant is Veronica Peña. This would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve it. On July 11th, we held a public hearing before the planning commission to consider this conditional use permit. The property is located at the northwest corner of Inspiration Road and Cuesta El Sol. There was no public opposition during the meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this drive-thru for one year. Staff is recommending approval for one year and our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, let's go ahead and accept the recommendation and adopt ordinance 4376.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and second to approve and adopt the ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item D.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is also a public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit to keep a portable building for office use. This is Florida's Palm Trees at 1609 East Expressway 83, being lots 3 through 6. Mission Palms Plaza, C4 is the zoning of this entire property. The applicant is Omar Villarreal and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council is inclined to approve it. Go to the picture. This is an aerial view on your monitors of the property. There used to be a car lot before. On July 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The property is located at, located 600 feet east of Stewart Road along the north side of the Expressway 83 and Frontage Road. There was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for three years. The business that's currently there is a nursery. You could see the flowers that they have out there. So, the board unanimously recommend approval for three years. Staff is recommending approval for three years as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, this matters now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not.
Move to approve, ordinance 4377.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation and adopt ordinance 4377. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. This position, the minutes that we had on the city council meeting of July the 11th of 2016, we do need a motion to approve.
I move for approval as presented.
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. We also have item 3.1 to acknowledge the recipient of the minutes that we had for our board meetings from Parks and Recreation Board meeting on May the 10th, 2016, Citizens' Advisory Committee on May the 10th of 2016, Planning and Zoning Commission on June the 8th, and Traffic Safety Committee on June the 14th of 2016. We do need to have a motion to acknowledge the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.1.
Good afternoon, Mayor, once again. Council, item 4.1 is a award bid for weedy lot abatement. This staff went out for bids for, to award one-year base term for weedy lot abatement. Services will include all supervision, labor, materials, supplies, tools, and equipment necessary for the clean and clearing, loading, and disposal of all trash, debris, rubbish, organic debris, municipal solid waste, and special waste, and tires. The contractor will mow all grasses, weeds, and underbrush. Staff receives six bids and is recommending to contract with OCL Enterprises, Condes Landscaping, and Rios Lawn Care and Maintenance on a rotating and as-needed basis. Delegation and assigning of weedy lots will be at the city's discretion based on workload and availability to effectively perform the services. All contractors have been found responsive and responsible bidders. Please see the attached bid tabulation for the amounts. We do have currently $50,000 in our budget, Mayor, and our recommendation, once again, is to award bids to OCL Enterprises, Condes Landscaping, and Rios Lawn Care Services. Our Assistant Finance Director Angie Vella and our Purchasing Director recommend approval as does our city manager, and if you, in our bids tabulation, Mayor, we see that the prices that they're giving us per each lot, and they're good prices, and we had a pre-bid conference with the different, the six different bidders, and we answered all our questions, so we are recommending that we award the bids, once again, to OCL Enterprises, Condes Landscaping, and Rios Lawn Care and Maintenance.
Okay, so that's the recommendation.
I move for approval as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Item 4.2 is a homestead exemption variance. This is for a .262 acre tract of land out of Lot 192, John H. Sherry subdivision. The address is 214 Union Street and the property is currently zoned R1. The applicant is Jose Borhón. On July 11th, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a meeting to consider this homestead exemption variance request. The property is located along the west side of Union Street between Glasscock Road and Toledo. The board unanimously recommended approval as per staff's recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the homestead exemption variance, subject to compliance with the homestead exemption variance provisions, which require an affidavit that this will be the applicant's own home, and our city manager is recommending approval as well. This matters now before you.
So, the recommendation is to go ahead and accept the homestead exemption?
I move for approval, Mayor. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 4.3, Mr. Cardoso.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.3 is the Office of Emergency Management Division is seeking authorization to accept the Emergency Management Performance Grant for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $41,129.43. The requirements for this grant is to pay a portion of the salary of the emergency management staff. The city must maintain an emergency management plan, conduct undocumented exercise, submit after-action reports and improvement plans. Be in compliance with the National Incident Management System, must be 100% in compliance with NMS, CAS objectives, and metrics, and submit work planned tasks and the timely submission of progress and financial reports. This item is now before you, Mayor.
How much is the grant?
$41,129.43, sir.
$41,129.43, Mayor.
Okay.
I move for approval. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the grant or the acceptance of the grant, and also to approve the management performance grant, no?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.4, Mr. Benson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I have the authorization to purchase painting materials for park structures. As part of the parks beautification project for sandblasting and painting of various park pavilions, picnic canopies, picnic tables, and trash cans, staff is seeking approval for the purchase of needed painting materials in order to complete said project via state cooperative contracts. Please see the attached list of material costs and applicable cooperative contracts. Staff is seeking approval to purchase materials through state cooperative contracts.
Okay, so we do need a motion to authorize.
Move for approval. Second.
The purchase. Do have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize, Mr. Benson, to go ahead and approve the purchase of the painting for the parks and structures. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.5.
1466.
Of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, adopting the year 2016 to 2026, Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan. On March 29th, 2016, City Council approved staff to contract services of Sally Gavlick doing business as Parks Recreation and Sports LLC for the creation, oversight, and filing of the 10-year Parks Master Plan, Parks Recreation Master Plan with the Texas Parks and Wildlife, excuse me. The city of Mission has sought input from citizens of Mission through surveys, public input meetings, the Mission Parks Recreation Advisory Board, and the Parks Recreation staff, and that input has been incorporated into this plan. A 10-year priority list of park amenities has been developed to guide the rehabilitation of existing parks, provide for guidance in application of funding, and suggest alternative funding opportunities. I have here Sally Gavlick, if she'd like to come forward.
Mayor and City Council members, I'm going to give you the abbreviated version of the master plan. What I want to talk about real quickly are the results. Number one that we had was that parks were in bad shape. I want you to know that bad is kind, not necessarily due to maintenance and that. It can be due to infrastructure. It can be due to park amenities being removed and not being replaced. It can be due to not having irrigation systems, so it's kind of a relative term as to what it means. Also, there was not enough diversity in park amenities, and that can be seen in the fact that they were looking at a dog park, tennis courts, disc golf, and playgrounds. That the lights are not on in the evening. In addition, we also got that there was not enough lights on the trails and our security lighting. The city should have a vision for their parks. Tennis should be promoted. Not only should it be promoted, we had quite a number of individuals who said that a tennis complex should be developed for the city because that is one area that is not being met right now for the citizens. There have been improvements to the park with the addition of the Birding and Butterfly Center. Parks are clean and well-maintained, but there are a few amenities in the park and insufficient parks and amenities per capita. We actually had 206 people who responded to the online survey. We had a focus group that was comprised of individual members from the community and we met with the Parks Board several times. 92 individuals were satisfied with the parks and 119 were dissatisfied, but their dissatisfaction had to do with the type of amenities that were actually in the parks. As part of a Parks and Recreation and Open Space Master Plan, you have to have a priority listing because that's how you get the points with the city, with the Texas Parks and Wildlife for your grant applications. Normally, you have the top 10 list in that, and the top 10 list that the Parks Board is submitting to you all is Trails, Additional Lights at Parks, Tennis Center, Splash Park, Picnic Areas, Playground, New Parks, Indoor Recreation Center, Nature Park, and Dog Park. The Parks Board also added two additional ones, so there's a top 12 list if you would like to submit that. That includes use soccer and football fields and use softball and baseball field. Because the point system for these two amenities were so close to the other ones, they felt that it was important to be able to include those and have a top 12 list. Prior to submitting this to Parks and Wildlife, we have to have the resolution approved for the master plan and the submittal of the master plan as well as the top either 10 or 12 priorities for the city. This is a 10-year plan, but you are required to evaluate it after five years to see if you've addressed all of your priorities. If you want to change them, if you have a large benefactor who's going to give you money to build a facility, then you may want to move that to the top of the list. So, you have to do it every five years. You can do it sooner than that if you would like to. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the council?
I have no questions. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
And we've been working, I've been working with Martino on the parks and, and they look very nice, but there's some little stuff, little things that need to be fixed, and I think this is where, what we've been doing. I don't want people to think that they're completely not good at all, but they are nice parks and they look pretty, but there are some little things that we need to fix.
And I think your strike crew will really be able to address a lot of those issues, you know, of what the community was talking about.
And we have 26 parks. Not too many cities have 26 parks. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, Sally.
Staff's recommendation is approval of resolution adopting 2016-2026 Parks Open Space Master Plan.
May I move for approval? To include the top 12 list, including the softball, soccer, and football?
Yes.
Second.
A motion, the second to go ahead and approve resolution 1466 and also include the two softball parks?
The softball, soccer, and football.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item 4.6.
Thank you. Item 4.6 is award bid for safe fall material for existing playscapes in city parks. On July 11th, 2016, City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for the purchase of safe fall material for existing playscapes for various parks throughout the city that have been worn and eroded through the years. City of Mission has accepted one, accepted an open one-bid response for this project. Staff recommends awarding the bid of $40,860 to Upper Valley Materials, DBA, CAPA. Who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. You'll find the attached bid tabulation. Staff is seeking recommendation for the authorization to award bid to Upper Valley Materials, DPA, CAPA.
So, move, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, City Council.
4.7, thank you very much, Mayor. 4.7, Silva?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.7 is authorization to execute the First Amendment to the reimbursement agreement between the Mission Redevelopment Authority, Reinvestment Zone Number 1, and the City of Mission. This redevelopment, this reimbursement agreement was first approved back in July of 2015, but we're requesting the approval of this First Amendment because due to the lowest bid being higher than the estimated cost, we had to revise the agreement.
How much is the reimbursement for?
The total amount to be reimbursed for the project is $1,087,500. Original estimates were $850,000, but due to some conditions that were found on site, the lowest bid was higher than that.
So, move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is a reimbursement from?
Terz.
From the?
From the Terz, right?
From the Terz.
From the Terz to?
The City of Mission.
City of Mission.
To the City of Mission. It's 1.8 million.
1,087,000.
I mean, 1,800,000.
1,87,000.
500.
Best commandamos, 1,87,000.
500.
500,000?
No, 1,87,500.
500, yes.
Okay, and this is for what?
This is for the Benson Palms Lift Station Project.
For what?
Benson Palms, there's a lift station project that's going on.
Okay.
This is on Shubak Road.
So, this is for improvements for the city? Is that improvements for the city?
Yes.
Yes, sir. This lift station should cover approximately just a little bit over 1,000 acres.
Correct. I believe there's?
See, you need to explain all that to us so people can know what you're spending the money on.
Yes, sir.
It's going to cover about 1,000 acres for the?
That's correct. For Benson Palms, there'll be an expansion of lots that are developed for the Benson Palms area, yeah, the development down there, so we will have more growth to the southwest of Mission. have more growth to the southwest of Mission.
Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
4.8?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. Item 4.8 is authorization to solicit bids for Housing Assistance Program Phase 15-3. The Citizens Advisory Committee met on July 12, 2016, and approved staff's recommendation to provide reconstruction assistance for four homes and rehabilitation of one home through the CDBG program to the following addresses: 1223 East Second Street, 405 Carrollum Avenue, 309 O'Blade Avenue, 133 North Canal Avenue. All four homes are two-bedroom, two-bath. There's one rehabilitation located at 621 Liald Street. Staff's recommendation is to solicit bids for Housing Assistance Program Phase 15-3, and so is City Managers.
The four houses are going to be authorized to solicit bids for?
Total of five.
And one rehab, Mayor. So it's a total of four new construction and one rehabilitation at 621 Liald. It's a total of five projects.
Okay.
Total of 275.
We do need a motion to go ahead and solicit bids.
So move. Would you approve?
Second.
The motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longoria. 4.9, Mr. Rasul.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.9, Change Order Number One for Reinforced Concrete Pipe at Inspiration Project. Staff is seeking authorization for Change Order Number One to introduce new item due to construction's feasibility. This change order will eliminate all work under item 460, corrugated metal pipe, and introduce item 464 reinforced concrete pipe for all the sizes pertinent to this contract. This change is being executed due to the City of Mission requiring and only approving reinforced concrete pipe on roadways within city's jurisdiction. The total amount of the change order is $775,538.44, which the City of Mission will only pay $18,612.92 as per 2.4% AFA we text out. Change order is less than 25% cap allowed by the Texas Local Government Code. Staff recommendation, approval of Change Order Number One.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve Change Order Number One. This is replacing the plastic?
That is correct. We're replacing the plastic pipe for?
On into concrete.
Yes.
And this is how much more it's going to cost us?
Correct.
Not a change order, no?
Yes.
This is how much more?
That's how much more it's going to cost, but only the City of Mission is going to?
On the plastic and to the concrete.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we want everybody to know. There's not a change order on the project. It's a, we're replacing it with concrete instead of having a plastic pipe.
Correct, sir.
Metal.
Okay. Because this is a lot better, and it's going to cost a million dollars more, but it's better for us. And it's actually not costing the City of Mission any money.
That's correct.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Salinas?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. I come before you seeking authorization to execute payment to Rio Valley Switching Company to replace 54-foot railroad crossing at First Street. Again, authorization is being requested to execute payment to Rio Valley Switching Company to replace 54-foot of railroad crossing at First Street. Rio Valley Switching Company will do the construction for this project to include labor and materials. The estimated cost for this project is $48,912. Again, staff recommendation, it's an approval of payment to Rio Valley Switching Company.
Need a motion to go ahead and authorize the payment.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
I'll second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize payment or execute payment to Rio Grande Valley Switching Company for $48,912. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. This is to cover the railroad?
Yes, sir. We're going to be replacing the section at First Street from wood plankings to concrete plankings.
Okay. So people know that the help is coming to that area as far as crossing the railroad?
Yes, sir.
And also the help of fire trucks?
Correct.
411?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 4.11 is the authorization to award bid for the overlay of various streets throughout the City of Mission. On May 23, 2016, City Council authorized staff to solicit bids for the yearly overlay project at various streets throughout the City of Mission. The City of Mission has accepted an open six bid responses for this project. Staff recommends awarding base bid with alternate bids at $576,868.48 to IOC Company LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specification. Attached, we have the bid tabulation and a recommendation letter from engineer of record, Javier Nogosa Engineering. And the streets that are going to be overlaid, Mayor, City Council members, is Stewart Road, Business 83 to US 83, Stewart Road, again, 495 to Mile 2 Road, Los Cebanos, 495 to Mile 2 Road, East 28th Street, Sherwood to Taylor, and Lee Street, Barnes to Magnum Street. Those are the five streets that are going to get overlayed this year, and again, staff recommendation is authorization to award bid to IOC Company LLC.
We do need a motion to approve the overlays.
More to approve?
Second.
The motion and second to go ahead and approve the bid. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 412.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Item 412, staff is seeking authorization to accept a grant in the amount of $6,400 from the IDEA Mission North Academy. The grant will be used for personnel during the fall semester at the Mission Boys and Girls Club. The grant will create an early childhood program for five-year-olds from IDEA Mission North Academy. Personnel will teach the students reading, technology, arts, and crafts. The program will be from 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m.
The grant is for $6,400?
Yes, sir, for $6,400 for two staffers.
Okay. We need a motion to authorize to accept this grant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the acceptance of the grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Vella, tax collection report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 413 is for the acceptance of the monthly tax report for the month of June 2016. The 2016 total adjusted tax levy was $19,120,976.05, and the amount of collections as of June 30, 2016 is $18,226,691.21, which represents 95.53% of the total tax levy. This item is now before you.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second to go ahead and accept the tax collection report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 414, financial statement.
Item 414 is for the approval of the June 2016 financial statements. The adjusted total beginning fund balance for all funds was $30,967,824. Total revenues for the period were $6,968,800, and total expenditures were $8,597,222, leaving an ending fund balance of $29,339,401. Total assets for the period are $147,322,225. Total liabilities are $57,718,874, resulting in total net assets of $89,603,351. This item is now before you.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and second to go ahead and approve the financial statement. That's read by Ms. Vella. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item 415?
Item 415 is the approval of the attached budget amendments. There are two requests. The first is in the general fund. This request is for reclassification of $103,000 between accounts for the purpose of purchasing material for the Parks Department to finish park improvements and maintenance projects for the remainder of the fiscal year. Next, we have a request in the Designated Purpose Fund, which is our grant fund. This request is to set up the budget for the IDEA grant received by the Boys and Girls Club for Personnel. This item is for $2,630 in revenues and expenditures, which is only the portion needed for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
The motion and second to go ahead and approve the budget amendments. We have a copy from our City Managers on what the items are for. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
416?
Mayor and City Council, the City of Mission Police Department is requesting authorization to solicit bids for the removal and installation of a security fence and gate at the main police station. In an effort to expand the parking for the Mission Police employees and increase the size of our impound lot, a request is being made to remove the rear fence line and reinstall it further south of its original location. Additionally, we need to completely fence in our impound lot to be in compliance with receiving accreditation for the Best Practices Recognition Program. The cost of the project will be paid through the Mission Police Department Federal Drug Forfeiture Account. Again, we're requesting authorization to solicit bids.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second to go ahead and solicit bids for the removal and installation of a new security fence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Rosa, 417, ordinance?
Hi, it's Mayor, City Council. Good afternoon. Item 4.17 is a request of approval of an ordinance, and this is authorizing issuance, sale, and delivery of City of Mission Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2016. This is payable from the levy of a direct and continuing annual add-on tax within the limits prescribed by law and limited pledge of the net revenues from the city's waterworks and sewer system prescribing the terms and form thereof, providing for the payment of the principal thereof and interest thereof, authorizing the execution of a purchase contract to be used in a connection with the sale of certificates, and making other provisions regarding such certificates and matters into thereto. Mayor, what this is, is an action required and an approval of an ordinance, and this is for the process for the tax note financing in the principal amount of $20 million for the purchase of land for construction of an event center, the payment of contractual obligations incurred for the construction of the special event center, and all related improvements in infrastructure necessary and reasonable to access all public utility services, including off-site infrastructure, ridoways, accessways, roadway, and drainage improvements, parking spaces, and other parking lot improvements, the repairing, rehabilitation, and renovation of existing municipal buildings, and an amount not to $600,000, and for the professional services in connection therewithin and to pay for the cost of issuance of the certificate of obligation. Basically, bottom line is we're asking for a loan of $20 million. We've been in contact with our financial advisors, Mayor Salinas and I, regarding what type of possible investment we're looking at, and so for the amount of $20 million, we're looking at 15 years. We have a rate of 2.55 interest rate, and this would be a yearly payment of $1,606,000. The part of the process is for us to go out for a rate, a bonding rate, and so we went out there and went through Moody's rating, and it turned out that we did very well. The city did very well. We were at an A1, which is a upper-medium grade, and we moved the rating to A double A3, which is a high grade. And what that does for the city, it participates better on the issuance of bonds, better bonding rates, and at the same time, we're able to get better rates when we go out for bonds. So pressing here with us is our financial advisor, Mr. Bob Henderson, and also Mr. Chur Ramirez with Legal Counsel, in case you have any questions.
We're still on item 417, and ordinance?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number?
4378.
4378.
I move for approval as presented, Mayor.
Second.
Okay. So this is the?
This is a loan for the events.
Issuements and sale of the?
Bonds.
The bonds at $255,000 for the amount of $20 million for 15 years?
15 years, yes, sir.
Okay, the ordinance number is 4378. We do have a motion and a second, I think.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Item 4.18, Mayor, also is a request of an ordinance. This is authorizing the issuing, sale, and delivery of City of Mission Texas Waterworks and Sewer System Refunding Bond Series 2016, approving and authorizing an official statement and the distribution thereof, a purchase contract, an escrow agreement, and a paying agent/register agreement, approving and authorizing all instruments and procedures related thereto, and providing for an immediate effective date. What this is, is a refunding of an improvement that we did to the water treatment plan back in 2006, and this refunding gives us the opportunity to refund a total of $8.26 million for 10 years. We're not increasing the amount of the years. We're keeping the 10 years, and this is an interest rate that we presently have of 4.41, bringing it down to 2.55%, which would give the city a savings for the next 10 years of $992,728.96. That's almost a million dollars in 10-year savings that we're doing, and an average of $91,000 a year. So we're asking for approval of this ordinance, and again, Mr. Bob Henderson and Mr. Chur Ramirez are here to represent the city as well.
The ordinance would be 4379?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4379. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. I want to commend the staff and, of course, the people that are responsible, the financial advisor, on the savings that we are going to have of a million dollars from changing it from 426 or 456 to 255. So that means that we're on top of the things that we owe, and the money that we're going to be saving in the next 10 years is a million dollars, and it's a lot of money. So I commend Martine and the people that are financial advisors for helping us out reduce some of the debt and at the same time, save us a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
419?
419, Mayor, is a presentation of the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2016-2017, and this is as per the city charter. We have 62, 90 days to, days prior to the beginning of the, each fiscal year shall submit to the City Council a proposed budget, in which the budget shall provide a complete financial plan for fiscal year. And so this is a preliminary budget. This is a budget that we discussed on Friday, which was our workshop, and it's part of your package.
I move for approval.
Second.
The motion and second to go ahead and approve the presentation of the preliminary budget that we have for this coming year, fiscal year for '19 to '19, for the 2016 to 2017 budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. If anybody wants a copy of that budget, where can they pick it up?
They can pick it up here at our City Secretary's Office, and we'll have a public hearing as well for that.
It is a good budget, and we didn't lower taxes this year, but we'll probably do it next year. 420?
4.20. Yes, sir. Item 4.20 is actually to set the public hearing for fiscal year 2016-2017 annual budget, and this is requesting to set a public hearing, and the date that we're choosing is a regular City Council meeting of August 22, 2016, as required by our city charter, and basically our city- And basically, our city charter under Section 9.06 requests that we notice the public on this hearing, which at the meeting of the City Council, which the budget is submitted, the City Council shall fix the time and place of a public hearing on the budget and shall cause to publish in a newspaper of general circulation within the City of Mission a notice of the hearing, setting forth the time and place thereof at least 10 days before the date of such hearing. So we're asking the council to set the public hearing for Monday, August 22, 2016. And again, the copy of the budget for public review is at Ana Carrillo's office, which is our City Secretary.
So moved.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion, the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
On 6.1, Martine, you need to make some comments on four?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our new museum director. Very excited to have her on board. Her, let me see, where she at? I don't see her.
Where is she?
Ms. Cynthia Lopez. Ms. Cynthia Lopez is originally from Mission. Before she went out to college to obtain her bachelor's degree and two masters, one in forensic science and the other one in museum, she was actually a volunteer, started a volunteer here at our local museum, became our curator and archivist for about a year and a half full-time. And so then went to Texas Tech, obtained her bachelors, her masters, and is actually coming back now as our museum director. So I want to introduce Ms. Cynthia Lopez and give her a big round of applause for a good welcome.
So they can see you.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, City Council. It's my pleasure to come back and serve the community in this capacity, and I look forward to working with everyone, with the community, and everyone's continued support of the Mission Historical Museum. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
That's all I have, sir.
That's it for the meeting. So we do have an executive session?
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, Section 551, Point 001, Mayor.
Second.
A motion, the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Reconvene?
We're going.
Will you reconvene?
Second.
Second.
Motion, the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Go ahead.
If the council wishes to take action on item 7.1A, motion to alter the city manager and/or designated to proceed with expanding the tenures funds pursuant to the contract at Highmark for the purpose of making all break-ins.
So moved, Mayor, second.
A motion, the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries.
The next item is 7.2A, Mayor and Council. On this item pursuant to executive session, no action will be taken on this item. The next item is 7.2B. On this one, if the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion to approve Resolution Number 1467, authorizing city manager, city attorney, or outside designated counsel the use of eminent domain on behalf of the state of Texas to acquire a point 034 of one acre out of Lot 1 L West subdivision, according to the map with that recorded in volume 127, page 186B, the Dow County Real Property Records, also known as 401 North Cherry Road, Mission, Texas, 7572, for the public purpose of a 10-foot utility easement and to resolve or require any necessary right-of-ways related to this project.
So moved, Mayor, second.
Motion, the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. Item 7.3?
I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.